Who's gonna do that? Who just?
Good evening. I'd like to call to order Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' regular meeting of Thursday, September 5th, 2024. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to your flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Sol, please call the roll.
President Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Cost.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Marcheska.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickrell.
Here.
Also President Clerk Sol.
And we have Trustee Mateo attending remotely. Attorney Pickrell?
Yes, for, since we have a quorum in the room tonight, we can allow Trustee Mateo to attend remotely, but that requires the permission of the Village Board to do so. So entertain a motion to allow Trustee Mateo to attend remotely.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion by, motion and second. Can we, voice vote?
Voice vote is fine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion is approved. Thank you. President's report tonight. We have several meetings coming up here at the Village Hall. On September 9th, Riverside TV Commission is meeting in Room 4. September 9th also is the Sesquicentennial Ad Hoc Committee Meeting, Room 22. Those meetings are Monday. Tuesday, the 10th of September, Landscape Advisory Commission in Room 22. Wednesday, September 11th, Economic Development Commission here in Room 4. And September 16th, Historical Commission, again here in Room 4. All of these meetings being held here at the Village Hall. Upcoming events include 9/11 and 9/18. The next two Wednesdays, the Farmer's Market continues in Centennial Park. That's from 2:30 to 7:00 p.m. The weather is becoming perfect, so I encourage everyone to attend the Farmer's Market. September 19th is Touch a Truck at the Water Tower located at 10 Pine Avenue from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And September 20th is Family Bingo Bash at Township Auditorium from 6:30 to 7:30. Pre-registration is required and will close on Monday, September 16th at 12:00 p.m. So this time, it's my honor to introduce Jennifer Bader from the Brookfield Zoo Chicago. Jennifer would like to present to the Board an overview of their Next Century Plan. Jennifer, thank you.
Yes, thank you for having me today and providing us with this opportunity. I'm Jennifer Bader. I'm the Senior Vice President of Government Affairs at Brookfield Zoo. Been there for about seven years, and we've just moved into an exciting new phase of our Next Century Plan. And this plan is going to guide the next 15 years of our site planning and kind of a 30-year vision moving forward. And so some of you may have seen this presentation before or seen it in the news, but we wanted to take the opportunity here to run as quickly as I can through about 40 slides and not take up too much of your time, but provide an opportunity to ask any questions you have. We're really excited about this plan, and we think the neighborhood will be too. So who we are, you probably are pretty aware of this, but we have a vision of, as a recognized leader, in influencing people's actions to conserve wildlife and value nature with a mission to really connect, care, and conserve. Build empathy with these new exhibits that connects people to animals and makes them want to make a change in their everyday life to help us conserve wild places. We opened in 1934, so we're nearing our centennial. We have about 235 acres that sits on the forest preserves of Cook County, so we are a forest preserve. And we have about 2.1 million guests that visit the site every year. We're really Illinois Zoo because the majority of our guests reside within 75 miles, a lot from Riverside and Brookfield. So we like to think of ourselves as the neighborhood zoo for the state of Illinois. Our Next Century Plan is really celebrating that 100th anniversary in 2034. It's going to be an ambitious vision that takes what we've done historically and brings it to new heights as we really have an unwavering commitment to wildlife conservation and care for the animals within our institution. And this will be built upon several different pillars. I won't read them out, but these are everything from animal care and wellness to our guest experience, building our educational and community impact outside the gates of the zoo, expanding our research contributions, and harnessing the power of our staff and supporters. This 15-year plan is really a 30-year vision, and again, has everything to do with expanding and enhancing our guest amenities, our animal habitats, that guest experience, and we know in that last bullet point, it will come with a very significant investment on our part. We look to plan to fill this investment with public-private philanthropic giving, and we're about halfway there as we look towards this first commitment of 500 million. Again, more than a campus plan, it reaches all these different elements, everything from sustainability and climate resiliency to science and research, our education and conservation and community engagement. You have all these slides if you would like to peruse them at your leisure later. But really getting to our organizational approach for the footprint of the zoo, we're looking at four different regions. The big green blob is the immersive eco-regions that transport you to a different place in the world as you walk through those areas. They're themed large footprints of the zoo that highlight different areas of the world. Our historical core is that north, south, east, west kind of cross depiction that is really honoring the promenade-type layout that we had when we opened in the 1930s, where people just came and walked and liked to be seen and see other people. But we're returning some of that space to our animal opportunities, habitats, and these wildlife discovery zones, which makes up a large portion of what is on the Riverside side of the zoo. And these are our hubs for attraction fun, really catered towards our youngest visitors and allow them to engage up close with the animals at our zoo. And then our Conservation Campus brings an eye into our research initiatives, our vet hospital, our conservation projects that are happening kind of behind closed doors right now. We really want to highlight those and add more windows into those programs. This just highlights what historically our historic core looked like, and we've already started to make changes to that area. We have, I'm sure you've seen our Anniversary Ferris Wheel that was here through the year to celebrate our 90th anniversary, and we've done a project with the Chicago Botanic Garden to update the plantings that we had around the fountain to be sustainable native pollinator plants in that space, along with statues that highlight endangered animals around the But really the next phase, Phase 2, happening over the next 10 years, will be rethinking our North Gate entrance. And this is the entrance right now that goes under a tunnel under 31st that floods a lot of the time. We would like to see a pedestrian overpass, you know, ideally in that location, bringing a really inspirational flyover as you come into the zoo that also highlights animal exhibits. You actually have to walk quite far at either of our entrances to see an animal as you come into the zoo. So this will be the new view from the north side as you look into a pinup head exhibit with sea lions and penguins outside, looking across this plaza. Back to this zones, we're moving into our immersive eco-regions. And so the idea in this section on the west side of the zoo would be to have plantings, different indicators of moving into a different space, a different biome, a different climate. And while we can't plant species from Africa, there are many local species that kind of mimic that plains and acacia tree feel. So we hope that as you look through the map, you'll start to feel like you're in a South African forest, or a tropical forest, or the Himalayas as you move through the west portion of the zoo. And the first part of that side is really tropical forests, and this is the large expansive outdoor habitats for our great apes, our orangutans, great apes, and South American primates that will be opening summer of next year. We're still on track. And it's a really great development from that historical Tropic World Building that opened in the 1980s and was the biggest exhibit of its kind at that time, but it wasn't, you know, our understanding of animal welfare and how we should house animals has improved a lot over time, and there's just nothing that can replicate that outdoor experience. So we're busting out the sides of Tropic World, the gorillas will get new indoor habitats as well. And one of my favorite parts of the project is we will also be investing in the education side of the building. On the second floor, we'll have a new home for our King Conservation Leadership Academy, which are all of our programs from birth through junior high in the community, and our team program that's onsite at the zoo. So if you have any teens, this will be opening next year, and I think it'll be a great calling card for that program and the free opportunities we provide in the education realm. And just to highlight, even this one part of the project has a lot of economic impact. We're seeing it support over 336 jobs, generate over 69 million in labor income and economic activity. And we hope that as the zoo works through this master plan, we'll also see some of that trickling out through Riverside and Brookfield, whether it be through additional sales tax and additional catering locations that we're putting on these sides of the zoo, and also hopefully guests that are coming to the zoo and then visiting out into the community. After that comes the very exciting Gateway to Africa Habitat Plan. And as you can see, this is kind of the whole northwest corner of the zoo. It will be a reintroduction of elephants. We have new expanded mixed African species yards where there'll be giraffe and zebra together, different antelope species. And this really innovative track, you can see the yellow tracker on the outside, this will allow different animals to use different habitats on a daily basis. So every trip to the zoo will be slightly different as you experience different animals within different habitats. And these habitats will be very engaging with lots of different elements, water elements, different planting structures within the spaces, and so it'll just be a little adventure around every corner. And we are committing to elephants again. The zoo had elephants. I think it's the number one question. Everyone gets at the zoo, where are the elephants? Or, you know, where did the elephants go? And we get letters like this all the time from young, young guests who are just interested to see elephants brought back. And we have a strong commitment in this habitat. It's 20 times bigger than our last habitat. It will be one of the largest and most dynamic in the United States for elephants, and it will be an opportunity to tell that very important conservation story because elephants are still under threat from human poaching, other conditions in Africa. So providing that opportunity and having a really good background and focus on elephants will be a large part of our next plan for the next five to 10 years. Okay. And this is a look on the south side of the Pachyderm Building where we're bringing in Nile crocodile and hippo into that space with underwater viewing, which is very exciting. And the inside of the Pachyderm Building has that beautiful 1930s architecture, huge spaces for people, small, tiny indoor spaces for animals. So we're just going to rip that out, make it a complete people's space. It'll be a great space for learning, bringing camps, schools, catered events into that space, and then providing new habitats for the animals in different locations around the zoo. Also within this timeline, possibly slightly before we think about elephants, is redoing our Australia habitat and providing more opportunities for the walk-through yards with kangaroos, wallabies, emu, looking at some different bird species that represent the country really well, and that will be, I think you would see within the next five years. This is a look at that exhibit that we saw looking across the North Gate over to the sea lions and the penguins, giving them outdoor space just north of our Discovery Center to provide that dynamic element as you enter the zoo. And then as we look forward, kind of 2034 and beyond, we don't have detailed plans for a lot of these, but we're looking at expansion beyond Salt Creek to the west. So we have about 235 acres. We use, I would say, this is back then, but maybe three-fourths of the property. We're looking at what we can do with the rest of the property to engage guests. And so this Himalayan and Central Asian step with snow leopards, takin', different vertical elements would be what we're looking for on the west side of Salt Creek, but to come probably in that 10 years and beyond timeframe. Back to our organizational approaches as we move to the wildlife discovery. So this is everything on the east side of the zoo. And again, it's that up-close immersive, on the east side, we currently have Wild Encounters, which is where you can feed the parakeets, walk through the wallaby yard. The idea is that small children can get very close to the animals, build that empathy, learn about them. So we have the Bear Grottos on that side that have been closed for a long time. There's some thoughts on reimagining that with different bear species, of sun bear, red panda, wolverine, and sloth bear. We just completed the renovation of our Seven Seas Dolphinarium, and that was a huge year-long project where the dolphins went to the Minnesota Zoo. They stayed there as we redid their whole habitat under the water with dynamic elements like keyholes that we can hang carp, not carp, kelp, maybe carp, bubbles, and different things for the, for the dolphins down there. And then we redid all the HVAC so that they had really great animal welfare in the air that they're breathing, both for the guests and the animals. But even beyond that, the team would like to look in the future at what shallow water opportunities might look like for dolphins. A lot of people think of dolphins swimming in this deep ocean habitat, but a lot of our dolphins that we study off Sarasota never leave 10 feet of water. So kind of highlighting that element and the research that we're doing in Sarasota Bay, Florida to connect it with our animals at the zoo is a, is a highlight as we move to 2034 and beyond. And then last is a look at what our offerings are in terms of non-animal opportunities. Having a bandshell, an amphitheater, somewhere where community groups could come, we could host school play productions, or just provide an opportunity for shaded picnicking during the, the zoo day. This would kind of fit in right where the Big Cat Row is currently, with that Big Cat Rockwork as a background after the big cats have left to their new homes elsewhere in the zoo. And so that again is another project that's kind of 2034 and beyond. Back to the organization, the Conservation Campus is right on the south side of the zoo. It's right near our new North American Prairie Avary, which is our newest addition within the Nature Plaza. It houses sandhill cranes and prairie chickens, which were our very interesting addition to the zoo, and it also houses all of our research and education. So everything from the research that we do in the animal hospital to help with vet procedures both in managed care institutions and in the wild, to our Education Leadership Center and other conservation centers where we're doing work with the Forest Preserves of Cook County, just building windows into those programs and those opportunities that guests can engage with. And this is what it all results in. It's a very large campus plan with a lot of animals you're very familiar with, some new animals. It's on our website too at the Next Century Plan, so you can take a look there and really dive into it. Through all of this, we're also thinking about the guest experience, both guests today and our future audiences in terms of tram routes. Our zoo is getting much larger, so how do you navigate it with additional bathrooms, amenities, quiet rooms, opportunities for inclusive visiting throughout the zoo? And then investments in organizational culture. We have a lot of staff that live in Riverside, so we're also thinking about what are the back-of-house spaces and amenities we need, the workspaces, the storage spaces to help our staff lead a really successful career while they're at the zoo. And in terms of infrastructure, I'm sure we're not alone in stormwater management being on the disc planes, thinking through as we build these new things, where is the stormwater retention coming from? How can we improve what we currently have at the zoo as we undergo these new projects? Facilities and operations, how do we get power, water to these different areas throughout the zoo? And then really focusing on how we can make that all sustainable. What grant opportunities are out there? Can we do solar canopies over our parking lots? Those are things that we're really looking for outside input of other projects you've seen or opportunities you know of, or any opportunity to partner with local groups or villages that's, that's on my plate. So any ideas you have, send them my way. And then implementation and phasing. This is four major phases, phases we have lined out from now till after 2034, and there will certainly be other, what we're calling agile initiatives, things like the addition of the macaws or the recent Crane Avary we put in that will space out some of these larger elephants, Pacific Coast of the Americas, and other projects like that that will happen, we think, at a cadence of every three years. And the next steps, this was really just the beginning. We unveiled the plan to the public in July. We're doing this ongoing public and stakeholder feedback, but we still need to do a lot of pricing and phasing studies, supplier diversity goals, economic impact studies, and strategic plans that will support all the programming and operations that we have behind all these new exhibits as they open. And that is a very fast look at our Next Century Plan. I'm happy to take any questions if you have any, or the village has my contact information, so anytime you have any questions, please just let me know.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions, comments from trustees? This is a tremendous resource that residents in this area have, and we're so very fortunate to have the Brookfield Zoo, our neighborhood zoo. As you said, it serves the state of Illinois, so thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. Thanks.
That concludes, oh, I'm sorry. One other thing, I maybe subconsciously didn't want to talk about this, but we are deeply saddened this week by the loss of Jerry Bottom, our former Village trustee and longtime dedicated volunteer for the, for the community as well as for the Village of Riverside. Jerry served as a trustee from 1995 to 1999, and in 2005, he served on the Transit Oriented Development Steering Committee. Jerry's unwavering commitment to Riverside was evident in every aspect of his life. He made a significant mark on Riverside through his tireless volunteerism and his steadfast dedication to improving the village he loved so very much. Jerry was always eager to support our community, constantly seeking ways to uplift and highlight the beauty and spirit of Riverside. And on a personal note, I obviously appreciated that Jerry, when I first got involved in village government on the Long-Term Finance Committee and subsequently on the Plan Commission, Jerry would always reach out to me and just say, hey, you need anything? You know, you need some background on this, whatever, and that meant a lot to me. So our condolences to Jerry's family. That concludes my president's report. Manager Francis.
Thank you. I wanted to report on two items this evening. At our last board meeting, the village received some feedback as it relates to East Burlington traffic and activity. Based on that feedback and those observations shared by the residents, the police department has increased traffic enforcement on East Burlington. Additionally, Public Works will be installing a stop sign at East Burlington and North Herbert. It is anticipated that that sign will be installed by the end of this month. So there's that piece. And then finally, upcoming agenda items. At the next board meeting, we will continue our discussion on financial and budget planning with the presentation of the financial forecast. Additionally, there will be a presentation by Barry Dunn that will provide the survey results from our Parks and Recreation Survey, and Williams Architects will also be at our next meeting as we continue our facility evaluation and discussion. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you. Resident comments on non-agenda items? If there are any, anyone in attendance who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now's the time. You'll also be given an opportunity during consideration of each agenda item to comment on that particular item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? There are none, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Sol, please read the consent agenda.
Approved voucher list of bills, September 5th, 2024. Approved Village Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes, August 15th, 2024. Review and File Board and Commission Minutes. Police Pension Board Regular Meeting, April 18th, 2024. Board of Police and Fire Commissioners Regular Meeting, May 20th, 2024. Landscape Advisory Commission Regular Meeting, July 9th, 2024. Parks and Recreation Board Regular Meeting, July 22nd, 2024. Planning and Zoning Commission Special Meeting, August 6th, 2024. A resolution approving the sale or disposal of surplus property owned by the Village of Riverside. And a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a cost-sharing intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Brookfield and the Village of Riverside for the Gulf Road Resurfacing Project.
Would anyone like any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, could I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
Motion is made.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second by Trustee Cost. Clerk Sol, please call the roll.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Cost.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marcheska.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Department, Board and Commission reports. This evening, we have a report from our Public Works Department regarding an update on the water meter replacement program. Director Tab.
Good evening, everyone. Approximately two years ago, almost to the day, we met and discussed water meters, replacement programs throughout the village. Since then, we've installed approximately 2,900 of them, so we are nearing our installation program. We hope to end by the end of this year. So I kind of wanted to circle back and provide a little information on the program itself and kind of where we're headed. So as part of that program with the new meter installation, the, the technology and new meters allows us to basically monitor water usage. And some of you here may have actually received phone calls from myself or Superintendent Williams, and when we make those phone calls, we're basing them on daily reports that we receive every morning. As part of that report, it's kind of season-sensitive, but this, this time of year, we receive a lot of leaks, and to date, we've received approximately 650 incidents where it validates us calling a resident. So 600-ish calls we've made in the last two years, and primarily those are related to leaky toilets, flapper valves are a big one. But specifically in the summer, we're, as late especially, we're seeing a lot of hoses that were left on. You know, people water, they shut them off, they just don't shut them off all the way, and we're able to see that sustained usage. So that's as far as kind of the leak reports we receive. As we head into the colder months, winter, the one of interest would be a burst associated with typically a frozen pipe or a meter that is adjacent to an exterior wall, that gets really drafty. It'll burst, which uses an algorithm, once it exceeds a certain threshold, sends us the alert, and those in particular bursts, they're pretty time-sensitive, right? We want to get those acknowledged right away. So we actually receive those on our phones. So we have called people on the weekends because we acknowledge that a lot of damage occurs when somebody bursts a pipe. Excuse me, bursts a pipe. The last one is a low-temperature alert that we receive, and that again, as we head into colder months, the, the low temperature measures ambient temperature around the meter. So if the meter's in a cabinet or an adjacent exterior wall and that temperature gets below 40 degrees, we're able to contact you and let you know that we want to get some airflow around that meter, and some people have been out of town and their heat goes out. So that's a good way that they can contact neighbor, go in there, and either turn up the heat or have the furnace repaired. So those are kind of the three primary alerts we receive. As we head into the, again, the latter stage of the program, we expect to, or would like to have all the meters completed by the end of the year. We probably have around 350 that have yet to be installed. This month, we're going to be sending a letter out to all residents that have yet to have their meter installed. It will be the final notice to those residents, so if you have not had your meter installed, please give it to Public Works a call. We want to get that scheduled and get in there and get that meter replaced as soon as possible. To that point, beginning January 1st of 2025, for all manual reads that have to be done for the, the older-style meters, there will be a fee that's incurred for every billing period, and that's going to be $50 for single-family residences and 100 for multifamily and commercial. So to avoid those, those fees on the bill, we want to make sure we get the meters installed. And again, this is something that the entire village is going through, so we'd like to get everyone installed. Beginning in 2025, we will be rolling out a customer portal with the meters, and this is something that residents will have the ability to monitor their own usage. Like I said, currently, myself or Superintendent, we go through a, a report every morning. We spend about an hour contacting residents for, you know, various alerts, and inevitably when we get on the phone, we discuss how to rectify those problems, and we, we offer even a, a leak investigation if for some reason they can't, they can't find it on their own. So the customer portal is really going to help staff out. That's going to cut down, down on some of our time that we, you know, spend going, going through the reports and kind of making phone calls. But yeah, so there will be plenty of PR as far as the, the portal goes. Can't give an exact date, but it will be early 2025, and all residents will be able to take advantage of that. Zero cost to a resident, it's part of the program, and we look forward to that. So any questions, comments?
I just have to offer a compliment because I think the new meters are wonderful. I think the peace of mind that comes with, you know, the data and the feedback that these, this new technology these, this new technology is able to bring is phenomenal, and I just have to commend your department for the follow-up and the work with our residents on this. You know, I think for anybody who is holding back because they're, you know, reluctant or, you know, just afraid of the process, that there's no need to be afraid of the process, and, you know, there's the ability to stretch the payment for the new meter over several billing cycles. And, you know, if there's a financial need involved, there is also, you know, discussions that can be had regarding that, so.
Yeah, the new meters, you know, we view them as a somewhat of, or at least as far as this technology goes, a somewhat of a, an insurance policy. So, you having that that ability for, currently, as we stand here, the Public Works Department to contact you should there be an alert that comes across our our report that that warrants, you know, especially bursts. You know, one incident avoided will pay for that meter right off the bat, you know, and water wasted, so it's good technology and it's worthwhile to, you know, to have in place.
I was just going to underscore the point that, you know, there's some, always change is hard, right? And we understand residents, not all residents understood the purpose of this project, not all residents were really excited about the cost involved, and what a tremendous benefit. We've essentially turned you into an on-call water meter monitor person, and I don't know if that, we're abusing you in that way, but we appreciate the service, and I, and I, I know that wasn't, truly wasn't the intent of the program, but it's a tremendous advantage for our residents that I think is probably not really understood unless you're the person whose basement almost flooded, so.
And we're happy to offer that, that service until we get that portal up and running. We're kind of the stopgap where we're acting as the, you know, the alerting portal in the meantime, which is fine, we enjoy it, we get on the phone, we talk to residents, and, you know, we might have a 20-minute conversation about, you know, how to di-test your toilets, and, you know, it's, it's all warranted and good, good stuff, so they have a better understanding when we hang up.
I would go with that webinar.
Right.
Somebody who had a phone call from you saying, hey, you know, like, it seems like there's something off with your water, and sure enough, there, my son wasn't turning off his faucet all the way, and so we were trickling out water, and not only did it save us money, which is great, but it also was, we stopped wasting water, which is great for the environment, too. So, I love it, I think it's great, and, you know, it's helping everybody.
The, if we can alert, we can typically catch a leak within two to three days, where with the
Yeah, it was fast.
The old meters, because we we read them or read them every two months, and by time we we issue the the reports, it might be up to 75 days before we can alert somebody of a leak, and that becomes very expensive. And, you know, having the new technology and having that ability to alert within two or three days has really cut down on our high-bill investigations because we're able to kind of nip those leaks right away, and then it doesn't translate into a high-water bill.
Yeah, it's great.
Helps everybody out. Thank you.
Any other questions? No actions, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Trustee Mateo?
I have a quick question. Another benefit of the new meters is we now have hard data on the number of service lines that are led. Does that, do those numbers still import to what the initial predictions are, or does the scope of the replacement look any different now that we have those numbers?
No, we're still in line and on track for our original projections. You know, we have, like I said, 350 more meters to install, so that basically translates to 300 services that we don't have the information on, but we we fully expect to kind of be in line with our original projections. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Tab. Pending business, we have another update regarding parking lot number eight, business space utilization update. Director, Finance Director Yvette Zavala.
Good evening, thank you. This is an update on parking lot number eight, which is currently under construction and is expected to be completed at the end of September, early October, October 1st being the date of estimation. We did a second survey to the surrounding businesses and received an overwhelming positive response to the business parking trial, and most of the, everyone was in favor of keeping it. I would, staff recommends that before construction finishes, that we keep the regulations of the current trial, but decrease the amount of spaces for the businesses by half due to the low utilization. So, using the data from the last, the last time we presented this to the board, about half the spaces were being utilized at any given time, in the morning, at lunch, and in the evening. To do this would require an update to the village code, and also to accommodate the businesses, we would recommend transitioning their business permit from quarterly to annual starting in 2025. Are there any questions regarding the recommendations?
Trustee Evans?
Did we confer with the business owners about this plan? We have to talk to them about
About change. So, there was a survey providing different questions, and Director Zavala can kind of outline what the questions were.
Yes, the survey was, do you utilize the business parking? Do the employees park there? Do they park on the street? And it was, have you paid for your, or have, they did not pay the, the permit, it's free. Have you registered for the permit for this quarter?
And what were the results?
Everybody said, they said yes, and the the results were, we like this program. They said it, during even the busy times, it alleviates the congestion on the streets. Someone noted, there was one response noting that the bank parking spaces are always empty, but other than that, it was like, we really like this program.
So, I don't mean to put you on the spot about the survey either. I just wanted to know if somehow we've let them know that we're going to cut the business parking?
Yes, yes.
A certain number of spaces?
Mm-hmm. If the board recommends, I could send another survey sending out just saying the intended plan, and if this will affect their operations or affect their employees or how they feel about that.
I just want to let them know before we make a decision. I, I understand that they don't really, it doesn't seem like their patrons need the space.
Can you pull up a second?
And so typically, what we're seeing for utilization is most of them are parking on the street. So, part of that feedback wasn't necessarily for patrons, it was more so, I think, for their their staff members and them not having adequate employee parking. But since we, during the trial, we allowed for employees to also park on the street, it seems like there's a little bit heavier utilization for on-street parking. So, we can certainly, instead of doing a survey, maybe we send out a notification to say, this is the intention of the village board, please provide any additional feedback. If, if we don't hear back from you by a specified date, the board would plan to take action by a specified date in October.
Yeah, and also let them know about the utilization
Sure.
that we've observed. Thank you.
Trustee Clarity?
I just, I wanted to talk about the utilization monitoring, and this is helpful. So, do I count on 20 separate days? We had someone go out there twice in the day at two different times, morning and after lunch, to count utilization?
Yes.
And your recommendation to reduce the number of spots by half is based on that quantitative data?
Yes, of the available spaces. You can see there's always six, six, eight, six, six, five, five, seven, five, four, six, six, seven.
And how many spaces are there?
Twelve.
Twelve spaces. So, not one single time out of 40 observations, was there more than seven spots of 12 being used?
Correct. And this is a heavily favored commuter parking lot, and we just want to accommodate everybody. If they're not being utilized, we want to utilize it in the best way.
Yeah, I will note, I guess, two points on that. One, I think the program has been great. I think engagement with businesses was important. I know this was something that was important to our business owners. This seems like something we could do and adapt to, and if, over time, our businesses gave us feedback, we, we're very close to our businesses, right? A small town has the benefit of being able to do that, and certainly, the Economic Development Commission has the ability to do that. We have, we have good feedback from them. To the extent someone's business changes, and there are more patrons, and we're getting feedback, I could always come back to this board. So, it seems to me, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to transparency and notifying them, I'm not sure that a survey is warranted because I think we have the data. The only thing I will point out is, if I'm reading this correctly, we did this in April and May. Do you think it was a fairly cold April? But I just, just a guess that some of the usage may go up in February. But out of the 40 observations, not one single time were there more than seven, and so there's still some cushion there.
Yes, and this is employee parking for the businesses.
Yeah, so I, I think that's my point is, I'm supportive of the recommendation, I'm supportive of notifying our businesses, but I think we have the data that we need.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Trustee Mateo, any comments? Anyone else? Is there consensus to move forward with the staff's recommendation?
I'm in favor of that.
Yes.
We don't need a motion if, if everyone's in agreement, it'll come back as an ordinance at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Yvette. Next, a resolution authorizing village staff to submit a funding request to the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago in connection with the Groveland Flood Wall Project. Manager Francis?
So, as mentioned at the last board meeting, I have been working with MWRD for quite some time to figure out a funding mechanism that we could submit to their board for evaluation for the Groveland Flood Wall, since the price has increased significantly from what was initially provided. In the table projected, there are the original scenario, which is the 7.1 million, and then the revised costs, which totaled to 18.3 million. And so, the board had the discussion and recommendations from Burke Engineering about what could we do to bring down some of those costs. And so, alternative number two was selected with some minor tweaks from Burke Engineering, so we provided that back to Army Corps of Engineers. They provided us some revised costs. During that time, also, there was an opportunity to submit for a community grants through the federal government, through Representative Garcia's office, for the Groveland sewer separation. If you recall, that initial amount for that project provided by our engineer was 925,000. However, that was not a federal project, so different federal requirements do bring that cost up significantly. We did submit that project, and initially, Representative Garcia's office forwarded it on to committee recommending approximately 740,000 to be funded. In my conversations with their office, with also President Pollock, we emphasized that because it was a federal project, because it would have to be, have oversight by Army Corps of Engineers, there would be additional costs, and we had not included that in our initial submission. And so, actually, as it currently stands, we are told that we are looking at receiving up to $1 million for that sewer separation. That project would be funded through the federal government, but we're anticipating that there's going to be some additional runoff costs of approximately 400,000. So, we're estimating the total project to be approximately 1.4 million. So, what does all this information mean? Well, the purpose of providing this is just context of where we were and where we've actually ended up, and so between those two projects, we're looking at approximately 17.9 million in total costs for both the Groveland Flood Wall and for the sewer separation. Of that federal funding will provide $11 million, and so we are going to be revising our initial request from MWRD, which was 2.5 million, to approximately 4.9 million. What, the, the purpose of providing this resolution before the board is to ensure that the board is supportive of us submitting this funding request, and then we will provide subsequent documentation to MWRD staff to then present to their board. Hopefully, we would then have an public partnership agreement that would come back before this board for approval with the final numbers, hopefully sometime in October, probably more realistically in November. And then, once all of those pieces are in place, that we have definitive funding moving forward from MWRD for this additional amount, then Army Corps of Engineers will be finalizing different pieces related to the engineering based on the revisions that we've requested through our engineer. And then, staff internally would begin the property appraisal piece for different pieces along West Avenue that tentatively could take 18 to 24 months, depending on the whole process. Both Clerk Sol and Assistant Village Manager Monroe will be helping in that process because we'll have to do a request for proposal for a consultant to help with those different pieces, because we don't have that level of expertise of real estate acquisition in-house or real estate easements in-house. And so, also, Army Corps of Engineers would then re-initiate the Section 106 process as it relates to our landmark designation as well. They've put a pause on everything, waiting to get confirmation funding for the project so that they could continue to move forward based on the alternative that the village is requesting.
Any questions or comments, discussion?
I don't have any questions, but again, I would like to thank staff for taking the initiative to apply for the community grant through Representative Garcia's office. I know that the notice on that was short notice, that tremendous work and effort was done to put together the application, and not only did you do it, but you also then followed through with it, and President Pollock, thank you for getting involved at that point and for really facilitating the increase in the proposed allocation, because I think that the ability to move forward with the sewer separation there is going to make a difference for our residents. It's something we can do right away, and, you know, it's a very meaningful step, so thank you.
Also, just as a side comment, when I informed MWRD of that funding, they were excited about that because they said, okay, well, we have some sort of middle piece to this project, because this project, the, the total completion projected date is either late 2028 into 2029, just based on the different pieces that have to be put together. And MWRD has had experience with similar programs, and so they were excited to hear about that, which is the reason why that we're asking for their assistance in funding some of those additional overrun costs on this. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else, any other comments, questions? If not, I would be looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion is made.
And a second?
Second?
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second by Trustee Koss. Any discussion on the motion? Any public comment on this motion? Seeing none, Clerk Sol?
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Koss?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Trustee Marchazga?
Aye.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Motion is approved. This is substantial progress on this project that we've been working on for a number of years, and all the credit goes to our village staff, Manager Francis and her staff who have gotten this ball moving forward, so thank you. New business, National Suicide Prevention and Action Month proclamation. Oh, I'm sorry, tax levy. Still pending business. Tax levy referendum update, Manager Francis?
Thank you. Provided to the board this evening is a draft FAQs for the tax levy referendum. This item has been reviewed by legal counsel to make sure it conforms with us providing information. Just as a side note, the village staff or village resources cannot be utilized to advocate for any type of referendum. Our role strictly is to provide question, provide the question and answers that residents may have relative to any type of referendum process, and so that's the purpose that this FAQ will serve. President Pollock asked that we provide a draft document for the village board to review and provide any feedback by next Wednesday, because we hope to have the because we hope to have the FAQs go live on the village website. Some of the questions for the benefit of the audience is, what is the tax levy referendum question? Will approval of this referendum increase my taxes? How much has the village paid for, paid over the past, last 20 years in interest and legal fees for these bonds? Why doesn't the referendum simply ask to continue the current property tax? And why 9.3%? How much of my property tax goes to the village of Riverside? Will this year's tax levy increase by 9.3% as well? I'm sorry, will the following year's tax levy increase by 9.3% as well? Why doesn't the village do a bond referendum instead of a one-year increase in the property tax? How much of my property tax goes to street bonds? What happens if the referendum is unsuccessful? So if there's any additional questions that the board would like staff to address as part of the FAQs, please let us know. We will be creating a trending article, posting these FAQs in addition to creating the landing page, and that'll go live, we anticipate, Friday of next week. Additionally, we'll be working with RTV to create a very short video to post on the village website, essentially providing another type of methods of communication of this information, but just in a video format.
Thank you, Manager Francis. And the answer to that most important question in that FAQ is that approval of the referendum will not increase anyone's property tax. It will just maintain the current tax level. Instead of borrowing money, the village would then be authorized to use that, that tax money entirely for streets. And again, would not increase anyone's taxes as a result of the approval of the referendum. Any questions or comments on the referend, or on the FAQ for the referendum or the referendum in general? If not, as, as Manager Francis says, please review that. And if you have any questions or comment, get back to Jessica by end of the day next Wednesday. If we don't hear from anyone, we will proceed with publishing that FAQ on our website and elsewhere. So thank you. Now new business, proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Week. Month, thank you. The proclamation reads, whereas September is known globally as Suicide Prevention Month, the National Suicide Prevention in Action Month proclamation was created to raise the visibility of the mental health resources and suicide prevention services available in our community. The goal is to start the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide to help to de-stigmatize the conversation and help connect people with the appropriate support services. And whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 14 and 25 and 34, with more than 49,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. Whereas on, on average, there are 132 suicides committed daily, each of which directly impacts the lives of at least 100 additional people, including friends, service members, family, social media connections and neighbors. And whereas the village of Riverside publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education and law enforcement. And whereas organizations like Hope for the Day and the National Alliance on Mental Illness Illinois serve on the front lines of this war, which many still refuse to discuss as stigma regarding suicide and mental health issues is far too prevalent. And whereas the village encourages all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of mental health. And now therefore be resolved that I, J. Douglas Pollock, on behalf of the village of Riverside, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention in Action Month in the village of Riverside. I'd like to get a motion and a second to approve this proclamation.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Evans, second by Trustee Marcheska. Any discussion on the motion? Any public comment on the motion? Clerk Sol.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans. Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marcheska.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Thank you. Motion is approved. Next, we have a presentation by our, by Nutter Consulting on our Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. You'll recall that we awarded contracts earlier this year to prepare Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. Assistant Manager Monroe.
Thank you. Good evening. I have, for the last couple of months, been giving a very short update and letting you know that we started work with our Climate Action and Resilience Plan consultant. And we have the pleasure of having a very, very brief introduction, probably about 10 slides worth of our principal, Melanie Nutter of Nutter Consulting. And she will just provide a very brief overview of introducing herself and what we're doing for the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Good evening, village trustees and village staff. My name is Melanie Nutter, and I'm the principal of Nutter Consulting. We do smart and sustainable community strategic planning, working mostly with local governments, but also with nonprofits and foundations. And I'm really excited to be here tonight to describe the project that we proposed to the village and have been hired to do. And as Ashley mentioned, it's been underway for the past couple of months. So we've got some updates as well as describing where we're headed as well. So just very briefly about our firm, we've been around for about 10 years. And as I said, we've been focused mostly on supporting local governments, helping them determine what their sustainability and resilience strategies should be, as well as helping them to do implementation. And we've been doing that again for about 10 years. And the project team that we have assigned to working with the village is myself as the lead project manager, as well as the community lead. We also have Katie Lee, who is our research and writing lead. And then we have two other experts that are part of our team, Patrick Marchman, who used to work for FEMA, and he is our climate resilience expert. And then Sylvia Pack, who is focused on the greenhouse gas emission inventory and doing data analysis. She has also worked for a number of municipalities doing GHG emissions. So this is the approach that we had put in our proposal that we are currently undertaking to deliver your Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. I'll go through this very briefly. So first is to update the current local greenhouse gas emission inventory and assess the city reports and other data. So as you probably know, you do have a greenhouse gas emission inventory from 2019. So we are fast-forwarding to make sure that we have a more updated greenhouse gas emission inventory. That data collection is currently underway. The second approach is to establish feasible interim greenhouse gas reduction goals and model strategies. The great news is the village has done a lot of work with C4 and a number of other entities to determine what some potential strategies could be for your village. So right now, we're looking at that entire set and will be proposing what are the most impactful strategies that you could pursue as a village going forward. The third approach is synthesize and incorporating the existing feedback from the community on proposed solutions and actions. Again, it's great that you've done about a year's worth of work asking the community what they want. So we have right now cross-checked what the community priorities are with some of the strategies that have been outlined. And we're starting to be able to funnel down where there really is interest in the community for specific strategies. Then the fourth approach is to develop and design an actionable strategic roadmap that includes potential partners, funding opportunities, prioritization, and a timeline to accelerate implementation. So again, you're not just going to have a list of strategies, but you're going to have how to do them, how much they'll cost, who will be in charge, and what the timeline would be to implement those. And then the last is to develop an outreach and education strategy and toolkit, as well as to present this to the public, as well as policymakers to gather additional feedback and gain buy-in. Of course, a lot of these strategies cannot just be implemented by the village itself. You really do need that buy-in from residents, from local businesses, to make sure that's implemented. So the first couple of months, we have been doing the data collection analysis, which I mentioned. And then we also are starting the emission reduction and goal-setting work. This is utilizing a, a number of different tools, which I'll describe, to create science-based targets to achieve net zero by 2050. So in terms of the greenhouse gas emission inventory update, this is what we've done so far. So we've reviewed existing policies and relevant initiatives. We have drafted the data collection template for the city, which you can see on the right. We are collecting local public data on city demographics, connecting utilities and service providers to obtain local data, searching for alternative county data if local data is not available. And we will start populating the greenhouse gas emission inventory tool. The two deliverables that are related to the greenhouse gas, gas emission inventory are the data collection tracker and completing the data collection template. So one of the things that we'll be doing next week is we are meeting with ICLI as well as ClimateView. This is a potential tool that the village could elect to use to input your, your emissions inventory, as well as do the modeling. There is a nominal cost, which we will discuss once we look at this and see if the village is interested. But it is one potential option for you to be looking at for housing your data as well as continuing to maintain it from here. There are free tools that we can use if that's not an option and that's not of interest to the village. So just to show you, these are three different pathways for being able to store your data, as well as do the modeling for the future projections. So we've got free options, as well as one tool that we'll be talking with next week. So this, these are just the next steps for the greenhouse gas emission inventory. The data collection, as I said, is underway. We'll be completing the emissions inventory. And then we'll be essentially coming up with a few different scenarios that show what is your business-as-usual scenario? If no action was taken, what would your greenhouse gas emissions trajectory be in the village? And what would the impact of that be? We will then have a number of other scenarios. If you pull certain levers, where will you see greenhouse gas emission reductions go down? And how do you meet ultimately your goals and targets? So that's going to be underway next. And lastly, of course, is identifying the strategies and the actions for the plan. So just to let you know, part of this discovery phase, what we've been doing is looking at a number of village plans and policies, as well as some regional plans and reports. Again, consolidating and looking at climate action strategies, as well as resilient strategies. As I mentioned, the C4 Analysis Prioritization Framework has about 118 potential strategies in it. So there's a lot to look at and a lot to pull from. And then the Greenest Region Compact Framework also has over 100 potential actions for the village to potentially undertake. And one of the things that we'll be doing is coming up with a set of criteria to determine which of these strategies, again, should be included in the final plan. So just a couple more slides to wrap up. The last couple of months, we'll be working on the action plan development, finishing the review of the plans, prioritizing the strategies in the matrix, and then drafting the plan. And then another key component, as I mentioned, will be doing the public outreach and communication. We will be developing that strategy and providing that to the village staff for implementation. And we'll be helping to launch that as well towards the end of the project. So again, this is just the flow of the six months that we're working on this, the plan review, data collection, emission reduction goal-setting, action plan development, and public outreach and communication. So happy to take any questions. I hope that gives you kind of a general overview of what we have underway and what we're planning, and looking forward to coming back in a couple of months and providing an update. But happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments? We're thrilled that this is taking place. We look forward to seeing, seeing the process and seeing the results. So thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you very much.
See as an ordinance amending Title IX of the Village Code of the, of the village of Riverside relative to meter parking. Fiscal Assistant Emily Stenzel will present this.
Good evening. Staff is recommending amendments to the village code as it pertains to parking prohibitions for metered parking located south of the Riverside train station along Blooming Bank Road. The amendments largely include modifying the currently permitted timeframe of 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and extending it 6:00 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. Not only would this then reflect the currently posted signage in the area, but it would also allow our commuters an adequate amount of time to leave work, return to their vehicles still within our permitted timeframe. Additionally, the language incorrectly refers to the metered parking locations as "on the northerly side of Berry Point Road", when it needs to say "on the northerly side of Blooming Bank Road". The final portion of the amendment is to correct the number of listed spaces from 13 to 15.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions?
Incredible errors.
Emily is doing an amazing job.
Thank you, Emily. Get us in order.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion, any public comment? There's none. Clerk Sol.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marcheska.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Motion's approved. Resolution approving a hardscape permit application for the installation of a memorial park bench to be located in the Triangle Park at Audubon Road and South Coat, South Coat Road. Director Tab.
Yes, on behalf of the Dvorak family, I'm presenting the hardscape application that is for a park bench to be installed in memory of their 47 years in Riverside. The, as President Pollock mentioned, the bench would be located at the Triangle Park at Audubon Road and South Coat Road, oriented to face east, which looks down the street there. The Public Works Department would handle the installation of the bench. This is probably, by the time we receive it, going to be a spring installation. It takes a little bit for the companies to deliver it once ordered. This has been put in front of Preservation and Landscape Advisory Commission. Neither objected to the installation. So this would be the third, final approval by the board to approve the installation of the park bench. It's a pretty standard bench. This is similar to the ones we've installed recently. It matches all the benches in the CBD, all of our new benches. We do match those. It's a Victor Stanley bench, six-foot, cast legs, black legs, with recycled maple-colored slats. So it's about it. Any questions?
Thank you. Just, could you, Manager Francis or, or Director Tab, just give, give us a two-minute explanation for the public on if someone's watching and they say, hey, maybe I want to do a memorial bench? What is the process for that?
Sure, there's a bench donation policy that we have in place. And as part of that, you contact Public Works Department. They fill the application out. And then we start the process for a hardscape application. It goes through myself, represented to the Preservation Commission and Landscape Advisory Commission for ultimate approval by the village board. The, we have current benches that have not been designated, and then we have ones that have been designated. We try to at least offer existing benches that are in disrepair for replacement, foremost ones that are not designated. Normally, that's not a popular option because when people approach us for a park bench that they're looking to donate in memory of whatever it might be, they have a certain spot in the town that means something to them. And most of those, for whatever reason, it might just be coincidence, don't have an existing park bench that needs to be replaced. So the, we've probably done four or five in the last, you know, as many years, and they are, have been new locations, great locations. You know, they're kind of obvious spots where you look over a vista, whether it's Swan Pond, where you look down a tree-lined road, you know, wherever it might be. So they're great additions to the town. You know, so as far, as far as the process goes, it's fairly lengthy because we have to hit each commission, and then the board approval, then we have to order it. So it, six to nine months is the, is the normal process. And like everything else, benches have increased in cost over the years. So we are probably, I have to get the final quote for this one, but the bench and installation is probably somewhere in the area of $3,000 to $3,500 for a bench. So it's, for some people, that it's a little too expensive. While we're talking about donations, we offer trees to be donated as well in memory of, you know, a family member or whoever it might be. So those are a cheaper option and kind of, you know, get the same point across, so.
Is there, do we have a plaque?
We don't, currently don't put plaques on our trees. It's identified on our tree viewer map. It's identified on our tree viewer map as a donated tree. We don't like affixing plaques to trees.
Well, in the ground in front of the tree.
Yeah.
Just saying.
There's maintenance aspects, and if they get stolen, we're replacing them for our costs, so. We don't currently put plaques on our donated trees, but.
Any other questions? Yes.
Back to this particular bench. Do we know what the language is? What is it going to say? It's going to say "in recognition of", right? Not "in memory of"?
We have yet to decide on the final language.
Wouldn't really make sense to say "in memory of the family's 47 years".
Yeah, we're.
Just checking.
The plaque hasn't been created yet or submitted.
Thank you.
We work with the resident to finalize the language before that's sent off to the factory.
Thanks.
Just a comment, as somebody who spent almost as much time at the DeVorak house as my own house growing up, and this is where I used to meet my friend. When we go halfway between each other's houses to meet, this is where the bench is going to be. So I'm really excited about this bench and really happy that they're doing this. And like you said, it has a particular location, because it's an important location to the family.
Any other questions or comments? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve the hardscape permit?
I would like to make a motion to.
In a second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, any from the board, any public comment? Seeing none, Clerk Sol.
Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshasga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Motion's approved. And thank you to the DeVorak family for the donation. Discussion on green landscape technology, Assistant Village Manager Monroe.
Hello. So this is a fresh, newer topic to us at the moment at the board level. We're hoping to get some feedback from the board about some direction as far as this issue. So green landscaping technology could be described as adoption of non-gas-powered lawn care equipment, right? So when we think about green landscaping technology, we talk about leaf blowers, mowers, trimmers, other types of equipment. Public Works has been making a transition for the village over the last couple of years, and so we've seen a growth in our, you know, equipment that we use on a regular basis. It's not all of our equipment at Public Works. And of course, if you have questions about that, you can, we can have Director Tab answer. But as an overview, this issue also takes into consideration some concerns that we get about the noise that's generated from gas-powered equipment. It is prolonged at times, it is outside of the allowed working hours for the village, as posted in the code. We have some concerns at a regional level about the quality of air, air quality. And so our efforts with C4 also, so the Cross-Community Climate Collaborative, has been using this as a primary issue of focus. And so they have a working group that has done quite a bit of research on the topic and have done several presentations. One of them was held online. One of our Landscape Advisory Commissioners was a speaker during that session that we had provided, and then there have been others held in the region. C4 got a grant to further study and promote the transition of not only residential use, but contracted commercial use of electric, to electric equipment. So there's a variety of benefits for doing that. And at the same time, municipal-wise, we have some challenges in when we think about that transition. There's a cost to transitioning equipment, not only at a village level, but at an individual or a business level. So there's equity concerns potentially in what that looks like, the timeframe in which case people would be given to transition. There's enforcement questions that come about as far as, you know, people who are using equipment outside of the extended hours or that it's just really disruptive in some way. We try our best to address that at a staff level, so we do have code enforcement inspector and building inspector that'll go and respond to things. We will try to get people to, you know, not only park on the right side of the street while they're doing the landscaping, but also to adhere to our other codes. Outside of business hours, the response is from the police department because to enforce our noise ordinances. And those, that's one, you know, challenge in focus on a particular area. So I just wanted to note that in addition to just this broadly as a topic that the board may or may not want to pursue, I just figured we'd bring it to discussion. The Landscape Advisory Commission has spent, for the last several months, the many meetings that they've had, they have self-initiated doing a lot of research on the topic. And so one item in the packet that you received was just a draft summary of exactly what they're proposing. So it's a draft, so I didn't include the broad research that they have also provided. You know, and they haven't been directed to do this. But their research is good, it aligns with the regional effort. And what they're proposing is a phased transition away from gas-powered equipment over time with some attention as well to our current noise ordinances. So I put together just a couple of questions for the board. We've received information in the packet, and I can certainly answer any questions that you have. But just in general, broadly, does the village board find merit in pursuing this as a topic, right? There's a lot of pieces to it. There's a village transition, there's also code changes to noise ordinance elements as well as any other code changes that would require people to make a transition away from gas-powered landscaping equipment. So there's pieces to it, but just wanted your feedback about that. You know, if so, any measures you want us to consider? Who would be responsible for that? And then kind of more broadly, is this the type of and scope of work assigned to the Landscape Advisory Commission? Would you like them to continue that type of research? So, and I'll respond to any of your questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions for Assistant Manager Monroe? Yes, Trustee Koss.
This might actually be for Director Tab, but what is, you know, I saw some of the dates and some of the suggestions and stuff from LAC. What is the village's timeline for?
I have preliminary answers, if you want to.
As far as the village's equipment?
Yes.
We are, I would say we're there. We use zero-turn mowers, which you often see in our parks. We currently have two all-electric ones. We have four all-electric line trimmers. We have electric leaf blowers, chainsaws. So we're there in a sense. There are certain pieces of equipment that are not available on the market, primarily our large area mowers with a 12-foot wide deck. You know, it takes a lot of power to turn all those blades. So we're not, we're not there yet with an all-electric version. We're still looking. And then, of course, we have some backup equipment that doesn't necessarily make sense to spend the amount of money for an all-electric version. If it's a backup, it's just going to sit there. So when we need it, or when we have seasonal's on board and we have an additional mower out there, we will utilize our current mowers. As they, you know, get older and come into disrepair, we will then replace them with an electric and then kind of shuffle down our older electrics to be the backup. So through attrition, we will replace our, quote-unquote, legacy mowers with an all-electric version. But our frontline mowers are electric right now, other than our large area mower.
Great.
Are the electric leaf blowers quiet, super quiet?
They're definitely quieter than an all-gas version. And, you know, when they're not being used, they're not idling, which is, you know, is good, right?
And are they all charged? Because they're not plugged in while we're using them.
No, they're battery-operated.
They're battery-operated.
Yeah, we, some of you may have seen our large gray trailer being pulled behind a pickup, a big logo on it. All equipment adheres electric-powered. We have big battery banks in there that can quickly charge our batteries, some of them in less than eight minutes. So, you know, the big concern is, well, the batteries don't last all day. That's why we have a big battery bank. You know, it's a commercial version, so we can, in essence, hot swap our batteries. And by the time, you know, somebody's either taking a drink of water or, you know, changing a line on their trimmer head, the battery is charged while they're doing that, and then eight minutes later, they're ready to go again. So we can turn over our batteries and not really miss a beat as far as productivity of the equipment, so.
So if we were to, you know, their timeline is for us to ban gas-powered leaf blowers by 2029. So in that time, the vendors or the landscapers that people have contracted with would have to invest in that type of equipment so that they could provide services here.
Trustee Clarity.
I was only going to comment that today, for the first time, I saw what I consider to be Dan's van, which is the Riverside logo that says all, I think, all equipment in this, in this trailer is battery-operated, which certainly I'm familiar with these efforts and commend you in your willingness. You could easily have dragged your feet on this and said, no, it doesn't work, but you haven't. But I was absolutely tickled to see that on the back of Dan's van, and I think it's a great opportunity to really educate residents, because prior to my time on this board, it didn't just really occur to me that you could have commercial-grade equipment that is battery-operated. So, you know, with regard to the proposals, certainly it's admirable. Certainly it's something that I'm interested in pursuing. I'll say I'm probably more personally interested in a little bit more education and socialization amongst the community. It's a little bit easier for us to make decisions on behalf of the village and direct current and future expenditures on behalf of the village. I think other residents may be like me and unaware of this as an issue. And five years, just looking at some of the recommendations from LAC, five years may feel a little tight.
Yeah, we do have to get some projections on, you know, whether this is being adopted, how rapidly this is being adopted. This could, you know, mean the end of, I'm not taking a side at all. Trustee Marshasga. I'm just saying that, you know, we need to be like reasonable and logical about it so that people can still have the landscaping services that they like to have. Five years, this does seem tight.
Well, I'm also thinking about the, not just the landscaping services, but, you know, for personally, I think it's a little, I think it's difficult, and I think there's going to need to be a lot of education and actually probably gathering information from people in the village to find out if this, I know there are people who want this, but where is the rest of the village on, you know, like personal gas-powered things and replacing them? I think that's a little bit harder when we tell individuals what they can and can't use on their property.
Trustee Marshasga.
Just going to highlight that if you look at the report from the North Shore Leaf Blower Task Force that's in the packet, it details the recommendations of the Illinois Landscapers Association as far as what they feel are reasonable transition time for communities, and that is five years. So while some people might say, you can't do it fast enough, you know, with the Contractors Association advocating for five years, I think it's a reasonable, more than reasonable approach. I do wholeheartedly concur with the fact that we need resident education on this. I like the idea of perhaps initially truncating the hours of permissible usage in our noise ordinance. Right now, if you look at our noise ordinance for, you know, the operation of gas-powered equipment, it goes from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, and then 9:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Sunday. I just have to say, as one who, you know, hears a lot of this ambient noise coming through the windows, you know, it really would be nice and peaceful and restful. And I'm not the first person to say this, because I've had a number of residents, you know, come to me on the noise issue, that, you know, that the dinner hour should be, you know, just a little more calm and reasonable and open for entertaining. And someone raised the issue of like, okay, enforcement. How do you even begin to enforce something like this after hours? Well, if the hours of the noise ordinance were rolled back to 4:00 p.m. as a conclusion time, then there would be a time in which, you know, our, you know, Community Development Department could do some, you know, limited enforcement if necessary. You know, I do personally hate the idea of having to have our police involved with this kind of dynamic. But if we make a change in the ordinance, we send a message that, you know, this is socially something that we would like to eventually accomplish. We value the health and safety of workers, we value, you know, the environment, we value peace and quiet and our sense of place in the community. And it is the beginning of a community-wide conversation that maybe moves toward an eventual ban of this equipment, but incentivizes the transition to electric, because you can use electric for longer hours. So those are just my initial thoughts on it, and I look forward to hearing yours as well.
Trustee Clarity.
Just a follow-up. I'm interested and curious about how we would reduce the hours, and open to it, right? I mean, I live here, I hear the noises. I'm also simultaneously sensitive to the fact that I see neighbors getting home late from the workday and a commute and trying to get that lawn. I mean, these things, you got to mow those things every week, it's relentless. Dan knows, ask Dan. And so I just want to be sympathetic to my friends and neighbors who are just trying to like get that last thing done before the end of the day and fitting it in at the end of the day. I don't have any actual data on this other than a guess, but I think some of the early start is probably more the commercial outfits that are doing that. And so maybe that's a limiting place, although again, many of those are small businesses who are, you know, have to have a certain number of customers to be able to get through. And we may be asking them at some point to invest in different equipment. And so I want to be supportive of that. I'd be interested in engaging in a conversation of what that might look like that could still allow people to mow their lawn and commercial. I don't want to put the little guys out of business. But I also want peace and quiet and entertaining. I want it all. Trustee Marshasga.
I think we all do.
One last thing about the changing the hours is that if we shorten the hours, I don't think that's going to decrease the number of landscapers, so the noise would be more intensified because it's crunched into less time. It might, that might be a result.
And I would agree with Trustee Clarity that. You know, it's, you know, I don't, I don't have a regular work schedule, and I frequently, we have, we are, you know, what you would consider, what most people would consider the dinner hour. My husband and I both work a lot of times on the weekends. Sometimes that is the time that we can mow the lawn. We don't have a landscape service. And so I know we're not the only ones in the village that fall, that fall into that. And I think the flip side of that is we also have an ordinance that says that you have to keep your lawn mowed too, right? So it's not an option to just say, oh, let it go for a few weeks, because you can also be cited for that. So as much as when I actually am home at a decent hour and would love to be sitting there like on my porch sipping a cocktail at 5:00 and not having the noise, I also, you know, respect the fact that for some people, that's the only time that they have to do. to do, you know, their lawn maintenance. And it's hard because I'm, I'm very much in favor of moving to electric and educating people, but when it comes to individual homeowners, I'm just, I'm a little reluctant of telling them what they can use on their own property. You know, but I, I'm, I'm definitely more open to discussion about landscaping businesses. However, I also know quite a few 14-year-olds that have their own landscaping business, and they won't be able to have their own little landscaping business of mowing, you know, 10 lawns over the summer if, you know, we, if, you know, we require them to have electric. So I feel like there's a lot of little nuance to this. I, I think I would be more open to discussion for landscaping businesses, commercial use first, before, you know, I'm, yeah, it just doesn't sit right with me to say, to tell a homeowner what they can and can't use in their own yard.
I, I wasn't proposing getting rid of it on weekends.
No, no, I know. Well, but I mean, but then you also have to be home on a weekend to be able to do it, right? Like, I'm, I'm thinking of my own personal schedule, and I know a lot of people who are in the same boat, that I'm not home during the week, and I'm definitely not home on the weekends because I'm doing whatever with my kids. And so looking at that 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock timeframe is literally when we, we find ourselves mowing our lawns because I've gotten, you know, I've gotten home from work, that's when I can do it, and weekends are a mess to do it. That's, and that's just, it's a phase of my life, it's not, God willing, it's not my whole life that will be like this, but, but I am in this phase where the 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock timeframe is the best time for me to be mowing my lawn.
I wanna make sure trustee Mateo has a chance before we start over, go back around again. Did you have anything at this point, trustee Mateo?
I do, thank you. I appreciate all the work and research that's been done on this so far, it's obviously on our radar and something that we're going to want to pursue. I don't have an opinion as to which individuals or committee or commission should take their hands on it, but I do, you know, based on my read and the conversations we just had, going forward, clarify whether suggestions are for contractors, for residents, or because my initial reads on this so far, that's clarified. And then, you know, we're not the first municipality to pursue this, I hope that we'll receive more information on places that have instituted, started bans, and how that's working for their landscaping companies, because I know that feedback is out there, and it would be helpful for us to hear it too.
Thank you. Trustee Evans, did you have something else?
I just wanted to make sure everyone understands we're only talking about gas-powered leaf blowers, not your lawnmower or anything like that.
It, it could be, so it would be a phasing of going to a, a leaf blower and then going to other types of powered equipment. I'll just note, just broadly in response to the conversation, is that it is an evolving issue. We've had other communities, like trustee Mateo had indicated, that have taken those steps to start bans or alternate, you know, modifications to when and where people can use this type of equipment. The availability, commercial availability of this, you know, industry and field is growing, so the availability, potentially price points change based on that availability and the reliability, duration of batteries, whatever so be it, it's, it continues to improve over time. And so there will likely be some market adoption of these things, but, for example, I know River Forest is actually, their planning and zoning commission is addressing this on September 10th. So we'll see what, they're at the point where there's a text amendment proposed, and so there are active, you know, communities that are, that are working through these issues, it's just a matter of, and they're part of the C4 grouping as well, but we can take some of that feedback and of course, think through a couple of other options to even start soon as far as just general education about the issue, that's part of what C4 is trying to do through this working group. And so if the idea or support of the board is to help publicize some of those things or hold our own session or something like that, then we certainly can do that as just a branch out of additional public discussion on the issue, including those contractors, landscapers, all of those things. We don't currently license the landscapers, there's only a couple of communities that have some of these ordinances that do actively, there's three that have some type of tracking of the contractors that are working on these things and also have these ordinances.
Can we go back to the list of questions you had?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I, I will give a plug for those who do their own lawn and give a plug for battery-operated. I, our household switched from gas-powered stuff to battery-powered a few years ago. I think I might have spent $300 or $400 total, including a lawnmower, leaf blower, and an edger trimmer. And it's so much easier, it's so much better than that gas and that heavy, heavy stuff that you have to carry around. The battery-powered stuff is lightweight, just throw the battery in there, you don't have to deal with the gasoline and all that. It's, uh, you know, it's well worth the relatively small investment, especially if you're replacing that equipment anyway. Any other questions or comments? If not, what are our next steps here, board? You know, you could direct an ordinance to be prepared, it sounds like you want more information or you wanna study this and maybe get more public input before any actions taken. Manager Francis, do you have any suggestions on how we might want to proceed?
Well, one of the items I wanted to make note is that if we're targeting specific type of landscaping equipment that we want to see transition at a certain point, providing what that time is, and that section 7-1-13 should probably be separated because right now it talks about construction and landscaping equipment, and so those are essentially your construction hours. So if we're looking at compressing them till from 8:00 to 4:00, that could be a real problem for Riverside residents because the contractors that they hire, projects will take longer. So I would recommend that if we're gonna go down this path, that we look at separating landscaping time limits versus construction, or if we're gonna create a separate piece that talks about at a specified point in time of no longer allowing the different pieces of equipment. The other item that I wanted to make note is that I believe a number of these communities that are listed, and the board has had this discussion previously, license their landscapers. And the board has had this discussion a couple of times over the past 10 years, and has opted not to have that requirement for those that do landscape work within the village. That from my, so my given experience in another community that's actually on this list, that's your best tracking mechanism from enforcement perspective, because even if we switch the hours to, let's say, 4:00, well typically, even if our staff is here till 4:30, usually the violators of that are gonna be doing it at 6:00, 7:00, and that's gonna be the peak hours when police is busy. And so that becomes more of an enforcement issue, but if we had a resident that reported that such-and-such landscape company violated the ordinance and they were required to register, then code enforcement could follow up with them the following day as it relates to that. So there could be that means of, to that end, as it relates to our equipment too, if we decided at a certain hard date that we wanted to eliminate any gas-powered related backup equipment, then we would have to include in our CIP those future years of replacing that backup equipment with battery-operated. And director Tab had mentioned the one piece of equipment that there currently isn't even an option for battery. And so just being cognizant of those different pieces for future action items and kind of the impact, because also if we're changing the hours in which, you know, gas-powered equipment can be utilized, especially when we're cutting during dandelion season, it's pretty much Public Works is working 12-hour days to kind of combat the dandelions.
Yeah, I was gonna kinda elaborate on that. If we do compress those hours, I'd probably be the first violator. Because during the, the spring and early summer when the dandelion season is, because, you know, we're not, we don't spray oversize, so we have to basically increase our mowing frequency, which ultimately leads to us working until 8:00 for three to four weeks in a row. So, you know, I have three or four guys on mowers on overtime until 8:00, to, you know, where our ordinance currently is. So we either, while we're on the ground level, I wanna throw that out there, full disclosure, that whether we like to do like a carve-out for municipal, I don't know how it would look, but I just wanna put it on the radar for anyone that's considering, you know, changing hours, we would be the first violator.
Well, I think it makes sense, what you just said, it makes sense maybe if we separate out construction from landscape, if we start kind of laying the groundwork for this by separating out the ordinance, and then, you know, and then I think looking at our own timeline for the village first, because I think if we can't, if we can't create a timeline for ourselves, it's a lot, you know, I think we should have a timeline for ourselves before we start creating timelines for others. So if we kinda, kinda get those pieces in place, then I think we can, then it makes sense to start moving on some, on some of the other pieces. It's my opinion.
Yes?
I, I am definitely in favor of separating the characterization of, you know, the source of the, of the noise, be it landscaping, be it, you know, construction, be it, you know, residential. I, I do think it's important to take action on the leaf blowers perhaps as a separate matter because of their tremendously greater impact in terms of, you know, decibels, particulate matter, greenhouse gas emissions, you know, all of those things. I mean, they are like serious bad guys when it comes to impacts on public health. So I, I think we need to start moving on those sooner rather than later, regardless across categories. But above all, I think that resident education program needs to be something that gets rolled out right away, you know, in the coming year. We can do that without, you know, an engagement, you know, with surveys and with outreach and, you know, just finding out what the, what the pulse of the community is, what they know already and what they need to know.
Right.
Yeah, I'll call to everyone's attention watching something that's in our staff backup material. One hour leaf blower use is equal to driving 1,100 miles from Los Angeles to Denver. It's pretty shocking, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
One hour. So what do we do? How should we proceed?
So what staff can do is come back with what our estimates would be for phasing out our gas-powered equipment. If the board wants to move in the direction of doing a leaf blower ordinance only, we can certainly do that. But I think the other big piece is just, the first initial step is just separating this out and creating two separate sections for landscaping time limits versus construction, because then you can kind of create the different carve-outs as the board seems fit.
I think that sounds good.
Consensus or?
Yeah. What does number four mean?
So, the question is that the topic was kind of self-imposed by the Landscape Advisory Commission. They felt that there was something enough there that they, it was a topic they were excited about and they wanted to talk about it, and then it grew into a greater level of research and drafting code possibly and all of these things. And so it's, it, when you read through the code, it doesn't fall directly within their purview, so there's been various discussion at, just about all commissions and what their responsibilities are by ordinance. And so if this is something just for staff's clarity, the commission's clarity, and whatever their work plans are, is this something that you want the Landscape Advisory Commission to continue to, to pursue? Is it something that we should collectively do with staff and that the same commission and group of people that have started that research? Is it something that, that staff does? What would you like us to?
Manager Francis?
It would be my recommendation that, given the board's provided clarification, that this would be a staff-related item to bring back to the board. I appreciate that Landscape Advisory and C4 have like touched on this topic, but I think it becomes convoluted when you have commissioners trying to draft ordinances and update code, and I, I appreciate them trying to take a stab at it, but I think it, it could just create more work on the back end. So that would be my recommendation.
Would you be, just so I can communicate with them appropriately as liaison, would they have a role in the resident education piece, given that they do provide guidance to residents with respect to native plants and, you know, techniques for the home landscaping?
I would think that that would be desirable for them and for, for the C4 group, given that they, they are both, they have individuals of both, both groups, and it's mutually beneficial and them taking the lead on just, you know, providing that different information and kind of making certain suggestions to staff of just kind of public outreach.
I would just wanna make sure that the content is developed in conjunction with village staff.
Yes, so nothing ever is put out on social media or on our village website without staff reviewing it. So commissions may draft certain things, but ultimately it's the oversight of different staff liaisons and myself to make sure it's appropriate, it falls within our policy before anything is posted or pushed out.
Yeah, I just, I think if we're, look, this is an engaged group with a mission here, and I, I appreciate the enthusiasm, I just wanna make sure if you're handing them a mandate to educate, at which we would be happy to have the partnership, that you guys are working in tandem and that, so that we're not working at cross purposes.
I guess, I think we have a consensus on proceeding with, you wanna summarize that, manager Francis?
Sure. First item is we will update the code to separate construction and landscape activity time limits in their own two separate sections. Staff will do some additional research as to, our timeline as a village for completely eliminating any gas-powered equipment, because that'll provide the baseline of what could be reasonable expectations for residents, and then we'll solicit some feedback on different communication and outreach and education campaign that we can provide residents through, via different volunteers of C4, and then the Landscape Advisory Commission can certainly have that conversation and make recommendations to their staff liaison, but then staff will further vet.
That's, we have consensus, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant manager Monroe, and you will proceed in that manner. Next on the agenda is discussion of the Village of Riverside Capital Improvement Plan spanning fiscal years 2025 to 2034, finance directors of all.
Hi, it's me again. So the capital improvement plan starts, is the start of the budget process. The plan spans 10 years, 2025 to 2023. This year, for next year, the highlights are, we will be starting a large lead service line replacement project, estimated to be $4 million. We have all the directors here in attendance answering any questions you might have, but there are some items that require board direction. Ethan, if you could please put up this line. I like to explain, number one. So at the end of this year, the current fund balance in the Capital Projects Fund is expected to be $49,000. to be $49,000. All of the ARPA reserves are depleted this year, which we use to pay for the pumper and for the new ambulance. Our estimated unassigned balance in the general fund this year is $507,500. And if you could see here, the total needed to fund the Capital Projects expenses this year is $1,250,128. If this chart here estimates that we use half of our unassigned fund balance in the general fund to transfer over to Capital Projects. And with that transfer, we are still unfunded by $864,426. The projects below are a list of discretionary projects. These are projects that the board may let to do or not do. The rest of the balance of the $864,000 are either contractually obligated or we, we have to complete, as the village must complete. Staff would like to ask if there are any projects here that they see should be removed from the plan?
Trustees? Yes?
Can we maybe hold off on the wayfinding signage for the year?
Is that, is that wayfinding outside of the business districts?
Correct.
So, yeah. Yeah, we've deferred that in years past. It's clearly a discretionary thing. And my question was just, you know, we, we are planning to do gateway signs or gateway entryway improvements at Harlem and Burlington Harlem and Common, but that's in the business district budget.
Correct.
And it's not reflected here, so.
Sorry, so I understand, we're, we're trying to make up an $864,000 shortage with one, two, $350,000?
No. Yeah. So those were items that were highlighted that we could remove. So the items within the CIP for 2025, we have certain items that were contractually obligated to do on an annual basis. So one would be like the body cameras that we have, the, the ongoing five-year contract that include not only that, there are certain pieces of equipment, for example, the SCBA's or turnout gear for the fire department, hoses, things of that sort that would put us at risk from a liability standpoint if we do not switch those over. And so in reviewing the CIP, it was, okay, are there any items that we can provide to the board as it relates to cutting some costs, but it doesn't make up that $864,000? So one of the items in reviewing with staff was, you know, what are the items that we can cut, it's still not going to make up for that deficit? I actually would, so looking high level, we've been accumulating money at Irma. So before I started with the Village of Riverside, the village would utilize our excess surplus at Irma for basically a budget to help balance your budget, essentially. We took strategic measures to basically build that fund. A lot of communities will automatically take it as cash at the end of every year if there's any surplus within the pool that is basically earmarked for their particular community. And Riverside did that for a really long time, and we've built that up to 1.5 million now. And really, the, more or less the philosophical question is, at what point are we going to use that? Because we're building it up and we're, we're getting a decent interest rate, but it fluctuates depending on different returns that they have. And so we can certainly delay some of this capital. If we did the entire fund balance transfer of the, the projected unassigned $507,000, what would be the difference of that?
The difference would be $611,926.
So it's really a question of, as of the end of last fiscal year, we had 1.5 million at Irma. It is expected that that will grow again at the end of this year, depending on returns on different investments based on the pools, how, how we've performed as a pool altogether. And so it would be my recommendation to position ourselves not to withdraw it. It was essentially, we would budget for these different items. If we need to withdraw it, we can. However, if we perform well with different projections beyond the 507 that we're conservatively looking at, then perhaps we don't need to take out as much from Irma.
So you're saying make up, make some cuts out of what is a very small list?
Well, the eight.
Pull the delta from Irma? I mean, this, this, the, the shortlist here that we're being asked to consider for making cuts comes to $378,000.
Right.
And so.
We'd still need to make up a difference of approximately $300,000.
And that, that 378 is if we.
Eliminate.
All of those things off.
Correct.
Okay. I think we need a bigger list.
Well, I, so you can look at the complete CIP, believe me, I have.
I know you're guessing.
You know, and so you can defer certain things. We can't defer our contract with Axon. So there's different things, and I can kind of go through it with you, the real broad strokes.
I, I know you know this, top to bottom, front to back, and upside down. And I, I also, I understand the concept that some of it is not discretionary, some of it we're tied to by contract.
Correct.
So I, am I to understand that the $378,000 represented in these seven or so bullets is really what we have to make a judgment call on?
Correct.
That, that's what there is. This is the list.
Correct.
So to put it another way, what, what we're being asked is, we could take, to fill the gap of $864,000, we can do any combination of Irma money and these discretionary items. But under any circumstances, about half of that gap is going to have to be covered by Irma. Is that?
Correct. Unless we experience a higher, so we have had a history.
Well, for budget purposes.
Correct. For budget purposes. We don't necessarily need to initiate that decision until that.
Right.
Until we have close to final numbers. But as we move along with the budget, we need to know if you want us to cut some of those pieces. So if you want a longer list, so there are items such as, which I, I wouldn't recommend, but I will put it out there, reforestation. Well, at $25,000, we lost over 100 trees a couple of years ago. That, to me, does not seem to make sense, but we could eliminate that 25,000. We have 15,000 listed for the spongy moth spray. Once again, it is spreading around the village, and so that doesn't make sense because that can impact our trees long-term and cost us even more money.
I hear you. I, I like the trees, but I like skid steer plows too. I don't know, Director Tab probably does. I, I guess.
He does, he does.
That, that's helpful. It sounds like you've made, you've, you've filtered down for us based on judgment, but there are other things in the budget that could come out. But based on your many years of experience being finance director and village manager, you've made an initial round of recommendations, and this is the list that we're left with.
And deferred different projects. So there were additional police vehicles that have been pushed to future years, too.
May I ask how, even if we cut all of those nice things, sorry Director Tab for at least two of those, we're still $486,000 in the hole? And so that, we're talking about Irma, right? But I guess, how, how did we get this far out of alignment? How, how are we?
Well, part of the, part of it is that, so many of you were on the board when we had to have these different difficult decisions in, let's say, 2012, 2013, 2014. And so it was essentially, we would defer a lot of things and that would cost us more money long-term, because we didn't have the Irma money, because we were just starting to work on, on building it up. The other piece is we've had a lot of really expensive equipment that we've replaced and the payments have come due. And there was an action item previously that we would delay transferring the money to the Capital Projects Fund so that we could earn the interest in the general fund. While all of those payments for those big capital items, that's why we did that transfer at the previous, previous meeting, I think it was in June, all those payments became due at the same time. You know, rarely does it happen, but because we had a number of capital items that we've been waiting for, for two to three years. And so it was just particularly a culmination of multiple events that occurred during that particular time that situated us in this particular position. So there are certainly items that if the board elected, we could certainly cut, but for long-term purposes, it may not make financial sense, in my professional opinion.
And you said we have about a one and a half million in Irma?
Correct.
So if we, just making sure I have the map.
Mm-hmm.
If we get rid of all of those things on the board, we're taking a third of our Irma balance in one year.
Potential.
Potential.
I'm just trying to underscore what feels a little urgent, urgent, like, I don't think we want to get rid of any of those things, but we're going to have to get rid of some of those things.
And remember, 10 years ago, there was no Irma money, because the village was balancing their budget with the Irma money.
But at this rate, we have three years of Irma money and then move back to zero.
Potential, eh, so how the pool works is essentially every year, they do an analysis of the funds that are available, different claim activity, and then when they have a surplus, it's essentially returned back to the membership. And the membership can decide to take that in the form of decreasing their contribution for their insurance through the risk pool, or they can take it as cash, or they can just let it build. And so we've been just letting it build over the past 10 years.
I actually have updated numbers for the Irma surplus balance, and it's $1,693,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Patel, did you want to jump in at this point or wait?
It's not a solid or budgeting issue, but for example, the village strategic plan, that's a new item, as far as I know. It's not clear to me what that money could be used for. It's potentially to hire a consultant to work on something in our strategic plan. That, this one lacks clarity for me, so if we're wanting to keep it, and we want to understand more of what is in mind for that. For the economic incentive program, it was all spent this current year. I'm wondering how many more requests were made that we couldn't fulfill. So in other words, are we likely to see requests for 15 grand or are we keeping it at 75 million again? These aren't going to save the budget, just following up on Manager Francis's recommendations.
Another question.
Yes?
That is whether, instead of necessarily deciding to defer some of these items that have been called out here, whether we could make them grant contingent? So that if we were to receive grant money, we could actually do them in 2025? And then if we had to defer them, we'd have to defer them? But instead of deciding right out of pocket that we were going to defer them?
I don't know if there's grant availability for those items.
I, I don't think so.
There were a couple of items in which we noted related to different grant contingencies. There was one related to the police department. They had an item.
ABES, the speed sign.
The portable message board and speed sign, that we identified as a potential option. So that one, monies would not be spent unless we received a grant for it. And so typically, that's what we'll do when we're going through the, the capital process is, is something, we'll budget for it, because we have to, but we'll also budget the compensating grant. If we don't get the grant, then we don't spend any of the, the funds.
Well, I was just thinking in particular of the economic incentive program for the CBD and then the Residential Energy Efficiency Grant Program, because those potentially could have grant funding opportunities come up in the coming years. I noticed that the economic incentive program for the businesses was styled as, you know, having to do with sustainability efforts. And for me, having worked, you know, with the C4 for the last year or so, you know, there's definite, if I had to prioritize between the two in terms of where to offer the incentives, I think homeowners have some natural incentive to want to make their properties more energy efficient, because it lowers their costs. But where you see the reticences with multifamily properties and also with businesses, because they don't necessarily own the buildings that, where incentives, where efficiencies can be realized. So they don't see the need necessarily, depending on their financial arrangements, to make those changes. So, you know, I hate to just get rid of those when we're at the beginning of, you know, a process with the climate action, the resilience, excuse me, excuse me. But yeah, I, I think if we could make them grant contingent rather than eliminate them, I would appreciate it.
Is that doable, Manager Francis?
Of keeping it in, we would have to put a compensating grant, but yes, we can certainly keep it in, knowing that the condition that the board is placing on that item is grant contingency.
Just to be clear, I think everybody understands this, but I, but I want to be sure and say it out loud for the public. The budget is a plan. We're not committing to spend any money here. We're just saying, here's our plan, and our plan is, and, and, I, I'm not speaking for the board, but one plan is to say, we're going to, we're going to cut all of those items that are so-called discretionary and then cover the, the rest of the gap with Irma money. But if we get grant funding, if we, if revenues are higher than expected, we can always revisit it. I know that, that Jessica and Yvette budget very conservatively for revenues, I think that's fair to say. You have to. But I, I suppose the issue is, is, you know, strategic plan, that's really discretionary. That's something that I kind of threw out there. We did that haphazardly successfully, I think, on our own. But a lot of villages hire consultants and they do a Saturday morning breakfast workshop where they develop their strategic plan. We don't have to do that. It'd be nice to be able to do it. It's also good for team building as well as planning. But that's clearly discretionary. The gateway wayfinding signage, it sounds like, you know, we've deferred that before, we can again. It's not a big deal. The rest of the items, you know, seem pretty important to me. Economic incentive, that's a small amount. It's not going to really move the needle much anyway. Same with the efficiency of grant program. Again, if we get grant funding or something, that changes the mix, so.
There are other items that are noted that are of great importance under IT. And so obviously, with cybersecurity being concerns, I would not look to eliminate. That's why it's not included on the list. You know, we are very fortunate that we have cybersecurity coverage. Under Irma, there's a lot of insurance companies that will not cover or not provide any type of cybersecurity. So we need to make sure that we're doing, following different standards and implementation of different pieces as it relates to IT. And so that's why there was nothing recommended relative to those items being cut, because we need to get our IT up to a certain level.
To react to President Pollak's comment, I know, I know you put a nice cushion in here for us, right? That's your job, that's what we do, it's how this is done. And certainly, it's possible that revenues could be up and grants could appear, but the opposite is also true, where, you know, you can have a, what was that strange windstorm we had where we lost a tree, right? Like there are unforeseen expenses here that can eat into the slush. And so I view this as one of the, if not the most important thing that we do as this board, and I think it is a tremendous, tremendously important obligation that we bear. And I think it is a tremendous, tremendously important obligation that we bear to be prudent stewards of this public capital. So from my seat, I think we need to chip away at that eight sixty-four considerably. I'm very open to Irma. I, I do, um, I falter a little bit at the idea of taking nearly a third of our Irma balance in one year without a little bit more diligence on our, on our part. Not to say, I mean, I, I, I believe in your knowledge and the decisions that you've made, but I think it's incumbent upon us to look really hard with a hairy eyeball at that eight sixty-four and try to get it down more. I have no, I don't quibble with the ten or the fifteen thousand, because it just doesn't make, it's a, it's a teardrop in an ocean.
So one of the large expenses for next year, we've already obligated. So the refurbishment of the ladder truck, which is three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. So.
We need a truck, we need a lot of things, we need all things. We have, we have some money and a lot of needs, so.
Yes.
I don't know with respect to some of these, uh, you know, trucks and vehicles that haven't been called out in the plan. I mean, I know each department has, you know, articulated a need for them. Is it possible to stretch it a little further by just putting a deposit and locking in the cost of the item in twenty twenty-five, and then not taking delivery and paying the balance until twenty-six? I'm, I'm just trying to be creative.
Auditors do not like to hear that.
Oh.
It's okay.
That's why I'm not a way of it was possible. I am not an accountant or an auditor.
Um, it's important to note also that the dump truck is a hundred and forty-three thousand. Um, it's actually, that's the general fund portion total?
That's the chassis cost.
Yeah.
Slub, however we like to do it, but it's, uh, the dump truck is, it's a.
Yeah, he could explain the use of the vehicles and their need better.
So it's, its phrase is dump truck, it's, it's a plow truck, which is also used on water and sewer digs. So the cost of that is split fifty-fifty between general and water and sewer. That's the cost of the chassis. You still have to outfit it with a body if chassis doesn't do any good, you know? But that would be the proximate representation of the general fund portion. The other fifty percent would be out of water and sewer, because we use it for water and sewer digs half the time and apply streets half the time. You know, of course, I'm gonna advocate for my apartment and anything that's up here. Uh, that is set to replace a fifteen-year-old plow truck for what it's worth, so.
But we did speak about early ordering, is it part of the chassis?
So, uh, it's a Peterbilt chassis. Currently, with all equipment, it's years out. I have a slot for a twenty, and a Q four twenty twenty-four build that they have already approved that we can pay in twenty-five. That is an agreement that Peterbilt has extended to us. If we forego that, we get slotted at the end of the line, which is, uh, Q four twenty twenty-five at the earliest. It is what it is, but that's kind of where we're at. So, you know, having an agreement where we can pay in twenty-six, you know, right now, we're, they're already carving something out for us, three months out. If we can't do, you know, fifteen months out, that's not something that they do.
And there's no gently-used dump, dump truck chassis available?
Uh, I'm sure there is somewhere, but.
Craigslist.
I have a used, I have a used truck right now to replace it with a similar used truck is, you know, it is what it is. You know, it's, it's a primary lead truck. We split the town into three, three, uh, zones, and that's one of my trucks for a zone. So, um, if it goes down, if it's a catastrophic failure, such as a transmission or an engine, we're plowing the town with two trucks for the duration of the season. That's not a part that you can just, you know, drive down to AutoZone and get. So I throw up.
So, I guess we have a, a couple of, a choice here. One is, uh, you know, cut everything, take the, the gap, the remaining gap for Irma. Don't cut anything, take the whole eight sixty-four for Irma, I don't think anybody wants to do that. Uh, and again, this is for budget planning purposes. Or I suppose the only other option is that we, we continue this discussion another time, and we continue to look and see if there's anything else in the budget we wanna cut to beat that gap. I don't think there is. I mean, manager Francis is telling us that there isn't, in her opinion, and I, I'm fine with that. But, so we need to decide then, assuming everyone agrees with, that we don't wanna cut these other things that our staff is telling us are essential, uh, then this is our choice. Is we, you know, it sounds like the strategic plan we can cut, the gateway signs we can cut. There's sixty, now we're down to eight hundred thousand dollar gap. The, the, uh, efficiency grant program maybe is contingent on exterior grant funding.
Certainly.
So that's another ten thousand, we're not doing much here, but we're doing a little. Uh, so I guess, do you wanna cut the fifteen for economic incentive program? Let's ask that. Or do you wanna keep that in the budget and plan to cover it with Irma funding if we have to? Then keep it and plan to cover it with Irma money if we have to.
Um, can we just forego the grants for a year?
Or we can just forego it for a year, yeah, yeah, for sure.
Again, these are just preliminary numbers that might change. And if there is a transfer, it will come to the board first, for the board to approve. So, and this is assuming the eight hundred sixty-four thousand is assuming that we just transfer over half of the unassigned balance in general fund, not the whole balance. And that balance can also go up if revenues perform better than expected at the end of the year.
So you wanna plan to forego the economic incentive program for, for next year? Or not?
We are so, we are so far away. Eight hundred sixty-four thousand dollar gap, projected gap. Don't wanna cut anyone's favorite bullet point here, but this, this is the list that remains after all of the other bullet points were deemed too, too big to fail. So with respect and regret, I think they all have to come off. And I guess I would like to see a second list, you know, that has some of those items that you don't recommend, but are probably the second tier that we should at least discuss by way of being prudent, right? So that we understand the hard decisions we're making. You know, spongy moth poison versus Irma balances. Right, I, I just, in good conscience, I can't cut three hundred and seventy-eight thousand and leave a four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar shortfall without taking a second look at the next tier.
I will tell you, with the first time around, this number was much larger. So we have cut and reprioritized to future fiscal years and took a hard look, because this goes through multiple iterations before it hits the village board. The lens that I look at it before, um, having directors of Allah provide recommendations is, is it something that if we don't buy it now, it's going to cost us substantially more? I mean, a great example is the ambulance, if we wouldn't have bought it when we did, substantially more of a cost to the village. Same thing with the, the new engine that we purchased. We would have been looking at, I think it was over two hundred thousand now, that the, the increase was substantial. And so looking at from that perspective, also looking at it under the lens of when, if we're doing preventative maintenance, like spongy moth, reforestation, that's helpful to us long-term. If we don't do that, then there become problems on the other end with maintenance and other issues or losing trees and things of that sort. So trying to stay ahead of it as much as possible to mitigate high future costs. So we can certainly take a look, but I also want the board to be equipped with what the decisions they're making and the long-term impacts, because it may be short-sighted of, we're saving fifteen thousand, but over the next three years, it's gonna cost us sixty thousand.
It's a, it's a, I grant you, it is a very possible and probably likely outcome that we agree with your recommendations and proceed with just that list and an Irma balance delta. I just, I feel like this is our fundamental purpose, one of our core functions that we've been asked to do by the residents. And so we, we probably need, I, I'm speaking for myself, I won't speak for the board. We probably need a little bit more transparency into, and education on, so we can speak to this, right? Because people will see this number, they will hear about this number, and we need to be able to defend why these are the only things that we can cut and why there, there is that shortfall. I don't feel fully equipped to say I have the level of transparency required to answer to that.
Would it be helpful at the next board meeting to, we haven't done this in many years, but we have done it in the past, to go line by line with the different capital requests? I mean, if, I, it, in all honesty, if we're looking for transparency and to have a better fundamental understanding of the different projects or equipment, that, that could be helpful, I'm just saying.
I, open to others, I'm probably fine with just a second list. Um, but if, if somebody wants to go line by line, I would never say no.
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with that approach. Just a list of not recommending you cut this, but if you absolutely said, I'm not touching the Irma money, if the board said, we're absolutely not touching the Irma money no matter what, then staff would have to tell us that, give us that answer. So I guess that's the, what we're looking for, right?
I think that would be helpful. Maybe none of it gets, but I think the, the, um, residents deserve that, if that happens in an open session, deserve that transparency, and we should at least hear it.
What directors of Allah will put together is the different items that contractually we are obligated to, so that you can see what those numbers look like in comparison to some of these other pieces. And then the board can, can make some decisions from there.
Trustee Evans.
I would like to keep an open mind about using the Irma funds. I know that next, you know, in the upcoming winter, we don't wanna be down a plow. You know, there's just some things that, you know, we can make, we can find a balance. I'm not ready to just wipe the whole list away. You can see what, you know, is, they're all important, but you can see what is gonna be needed on a day-to-day basis. You know, versus special projects.
I, I wanna expand on that, but first, RTV, there's an echo in here for some reason, I don't.
I think it's in the hallway.
Okay. If you can look into that. Um, so, what I was, you, you, you segued into something I wanted to comment on is, I don't want anyone to perceive the fact that we might have to use Irma money as a negative. It's not, this is money that is, the taxpayers of the village have given to the village. At some point, we need to spend it to provide services or give it back to them. You know, there's always a balance, as a, as a village manager, I experienced this, and, uh, and Jessica knows this. There's always a balance between how much reserves should you keep and how much should you spend? Because we're not here to just, to keep money, we're here to provide services. So, yeah, I don't want anyone to walk away from this conversation thinking, oh, the village is in trouble, we have to use Irma reserves. No, we have a great manager and finance director who, over the years, has built up this reserve money, and we have the luxury of having that money available to us if we wanna use it.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Does this take into account the real estate that we're selling on East Burlington?
It's under the business district, so that, that's a separate fund.
So I think the consensus is, if I, and, and I'm looking for head nods here, uh, is that we would, at least for now, we, we won't but, adopt the budget till December, but at least for now, we'll do a budget where we're going to cut all of these items on here, uh, and close the gap with the Irma fund. But it, the next meeting, staff will come back to us and say, if you don't wanna use Irma at all, here are the things that you should consider.
Or less Irma.
Or less Irma funding, yes. Is that doable?
I don't know that I heard that related to the dump truck for snow removal.
Good question, you wanna, is there something you wanna absolutely leave in no matter what?
I would say so, it's a third of our fleet of snow plows. I, that's my.
Is that the dump truck chassis or the skid steer plow? I, I apologize, I, I got, I got a little confused as we started talking about this, which is which?
Yeah, let me clarify a little bit. The, uh, the skid steer is the Bobcat with big broom on it that clears all of the CBD sidewalks.
Gotcha.
The transportation platform.
Okay.
It's nineteen years old, I believe, so.
So when we're talking about the third of the plows for the village, we're talking about the dump truck chassis?
Of the truck.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So we have one to leave that in there?
I, I, um, I don't think we can afford it. This year.
Anyone else?
Right now, we are in a queue. If we were deciding not to move forward, then the dollar amount will reset, and we will be put back in line, well, it'll restart.
Yeah, I have a, a, call it a handshake agreement with Peterbilt, but they're holding us, a spot for us for a Q four twenty-four build that we don't have to pay for until, uh, January of twenty-five. So if, if the board decides tonight that we're cutting that list, I'm calling Peterbilt tomorrow and giving away our spot. Because, um, they have to, uh, they already have a build sheet on file for us, and they have to move on that to start the build. So, um, you know, based on what sounds, you know, the way we're trending is, I'll be calling Peterbilt tomorrow, they'll give away our spot, we'll get back in line for, um, at the earliest, a Q four twenty-five chassis, and probably a, uh, Q one or two twenty-six body. So it would be. It would be, yeah, we, we wouldn't use it, we'd probably be using it for the, the twenty-seven snow season. And that's just the reality of vehicles these days. And we're, you know, we're probably a five percent cost increase for twenty-five alone.
And going without that, how's that gonna affect the residents?
Well, I have a, you know, like I said, I don't have a backup snow plow. And we have experienced, uh, as early as this past season, when something goes down, I have two drivers split the town. So currently, to apply salt, um, to the entire town, using all three trucks, it's two and a half hours. And then you, we can do the math, if there's only two trucks, it's, you know, it's longer, obviously. Uh, if we're plowing, so, if we're plowing snow to the entire town, it's six hours. That's with all three, all three trucks running. And then again, if you split the town half, it's, you know, one and a half times longer. So, um, it's, if a truck goes down, we, we order the parts and we have to repair it. And again, this is, I'm not saying the truck is not usable as we stand here, it's just as some things age, it's fifteen years old. The wear and tear on a, you know, if anyone ever wants to go for a ride in a plow truck, let me know, and be more than happy to join in there. The wear and tear on a truck is tremendous with, you know, degraded roads, if we have those. So, you know, it's akin to, I'm not gonna drive a, uh, you know, a somewhat unreliable, unreliable vehicle to my, my job every day. I'm gonna buy a vehicle to replace that, so I make sure I can make it to my job. This is, we want to, um, you know, it's a safety concern, right? For the, the roads aren't plowed, we, we have a, a, a safety issue. So we wanna make sure we have usable vehicles to get there out on the street as soon as possible, um, and not have to delay by splitting the town in half when we have a vehicle down.
So.
Do we have to decide tonight on solace?
Nothing is necessarily final until we adopt the budget. And actually, even then, it's, as I said, it's just a plan. And until we actually award the contract, we can do what we want, but, um, but I think we do need to decide, given the facts available to us now. And I'm gonna poll the board here, I'd ask you, each of you to give me a yes or no, yes? Keep the dump truck in, in the budget and pay for it with Irma funds if we have to? Or no, it'll remove it from the budget and defer it to a subsequent year?
Can I say, ask one more thing before?
Sure.
So is this the truck that if it's not working, you rent a truck for three fifty a day?
No, that would be the skid steer.
Oh, okay.
Yes, if I had to rent one of these, it would be a lot more than three fifty a day.
And, um, what is the, how do you feel about this truck making it through this winter? And what is the, how do you feel about this truck making it through this winter?
If I had a, uh, you know, glass wall, I, I could tell you, but, you know, it, it's, it's usable. Yeah, it's usable. I can't predict if a transmission goes out. Deal or something is, you're more, you know, it's an odds game, right? Deal or something is, you're more inclined, you are, to have a, a, you know, an issue. We do the required maintenance on it, like any other vehicle, um, but...
And then the consequences are just, maybe this is not a just type of consequence, but it's that it takes a few more hours to clear the snow.
Correct, and salt the roads.
I mean, with that context, it seems different. I have like sort of a different...
Well, there is a safety aspect, too. The longer it takes, the less safe things are. So there's a safety aspect to it. It's not just, oh, somebody has to take a little longer, you know? The longer a road is unplowed, the longer something's unplowed.
It's not a lawnmower that if it takes longer to cut the grass.
Right.
Grass just stays long.
Yeah.
If it's longer to plow the roads, people get in accidents.
Right.
And so then there's more police calls. Is there a safety issue too with the fire vehicle? The eighty thousand dollar fire vehicle?
What was that?
Is there a safety issue also with the eighty thousand dollar fire vehicle?
It's at, nearing the end of its life. That one, that's why it's put on the suggested list for deferring. Um, but as it relates to the public works vehicle, we have to remember that even if we place the order and we get the chassis next year, we still have to complete the outfitting of it, which now we're looking at currently fifteen, almost sixteen-year-old vehicle. By the time we actually get it to replacement, it's almost an eighteen-year-old vehicle because of the different timeframes. So just kind of recognizing that piece, too.
Also, like President Pollak said, this is just the plan. When each project will get, anything over twenty-five thousand dollars gets presented to the board again for approval. For our purchase order.
So we need direction.
Yeah, I, I can't take the risk of a resident getting into an accident just because we didn't want to spend the money now when we have it. I mean, this is a matter of quality of life here, so I, I would not be in favor of getting rid of the, the truck chassis off, uh, off this list.
Okay.
I think we have an obligation.
Keep it on the list? Or keep it, keep it in the budget?
Keep it in the budget.
Yep. Others? Like to hear from everybody on this as possible. I heard from down here...
You know what I, I feel like this is the, this is, huh, out of your whole budget, this is all that fell out as possible to be cut, right? So a million hard decisions were already made just to get to this. So I want to respect that there were safety decisions made in there. There were machines, I'm sure, that were already broken and dead, like, no decision down here is an easy one. I'm not excited about pulling off the dump truck chassis and having a tremendous snowfall this year and having a bunch of angry residents. But what I hear is we have a massive gap, the thing still works. Hope for the best. And it, it's the difference between six hours or nine hours. It's, it's an ugly decision, but I don't think we can afford it.
And, and in those three hours, how many accidents can possibly happen if we have a blizzard?
Yeah, how many accidents, fewer accidents could happen if we bought two? You know, we have to make hard decisions.
You're absolutely right. There's, it's, there's no right or wrong here. It's just, uh, you know, it's kind of rolling the dice. Will the equipment last or not, you know, so...
I will, um, keep the plow.
Keep the plow. Elizabeth?
Is that, okay.
We'll call it that.
I'm back to the... Keep the chassis. Thank you, sorry.
Chassis, sorry, yes.
Did a break, he just broke, didn't he?
Uh, yeah, I think we need to keep the chassis.
Keep the chassis. Alex, you said, keep the chassis.
I'd say keep the chassis here.
Yep. Trustee Mateo?
I couldn't hear what trustee Marsh Azka said, but, you know, this, the budgets and plans, you pointed out many times in our first discussion of CIP, so it's a gap form. My vote would be to keep it in for now and see what happens in our next discussions.
Okay. So the consensus is to keep it in there for now?
And Dan will not be calling Peterbilt tomorrow then?
Right, I'd be calling Peterbilt.
So just for clarification, I want to make sure we're, when we say keep it in there for now, if there's a chance it's going to be cut, you know, I, the intent is if it's approved tonight, I have to come to the next meeting with a PO for the chassis.
Oh, okay.
Because there's a timeline for the, the start of the build. So I just, full disclosure, that's, that would be the intent, is to come to the next meeting with a PO.
So we would have to make a commitment at the next meeting, so...
Yes, well, we have to make a commitment tonight, so I can tell Peterbilt tomorrow or a year and a half. And then they can expect a PO the next meeting.
Then I will surprise saying that I feel very strongly in keeping this and I'd have to have overwhelming evidence that we don't need it. And I can't imagine that being...
Does that change anyone's opinion?
No, it doesn't change my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll take that for now.
I'm sorry, what was that, trustee Mateo?
I would just take that line of discussion for now. I mean, it's just going to cost so much more to be delayed, so...
Yeah. Okay. What's next on your list? Hopefully easier decisions?
No, nothing with the budget is ever easy.
That's true.
Um, I just want to, um, point out a couple of items for consideration, which is street funding. There are no major projects scheduled for twenty twenty-five at this point, but without additional funding, um, the projects that are scheduled for twenty twenty-six will leave the street fund in a deficit of one million five hundred thousand dollars. Um, projects that were budgeted for twenty twenty-four, um, Lionel Riverside Road Reconstruction were postponed and are due to be completed in twenty twenty-six. So that's just one item I wanted to bring to attention to the board. That additional funding will be needed, whether it be through the tax levy referendum or, uh, general obligation tax stuff, referendum as well. Um, the general consensus last year in twenty twenty-three for Parks and Recreation Capital Plan, um, for replacing large playground, um, equipment redesigns, the consensus was to wait until after the survey was completed. I just want to ask again before, you know, if we should wait before we start, um, looking at any funding options.
Right.
And then again, um, there are larger purchases, um, due in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-nine for public safety vehicles. And staff is aware that we're starting to monitor fund balance, make sure we're building the reserves to replace these, and we're going to evaluate the condition of the vehicles as they come due for replacement. We were able to save, um, a considerable amount of money doing the refurbishment of the ladder truck. And that's something we will keep in mind going into future years. And we're, and as we come closer to that, we'll be able to bring different ideals and opinions on how we could save money or what are the condition of the vehicles. At this time, I created a listing of the vehicles where we will monitor when they were purchased, so we could give, um, better information going through the budget process in future years as to when these vehicles and the actual maintenance costs will be included, too. So we can see if it's economically feasible or it makes sense to replace these vehicles at that time. And I think that is it.
Discussion or comments?
I, I just want to make one comment, um, as it relates to Parks and Recreation. So this is the first year that they have their own standalone fund with their fund balance. And so if we look back fifteen years ago, that wasn't the case. They were under the general fund. There were, was concerns about the future of the department. And now, as you look out of how they've built up their fund balance, the team at Parks and Recreation, that they're doing this comprehensive plan that's also fully funded by the surpluses that they're derived. While we're having a conversation that's not great about not having funding, they've worked really hard to pay back their general fund loan. Um, and it's targeted to be fully paid back within the next couple of years, which we initially had a twenty-year timeline. So I just, I thought, felt it was important to note those achievements. Um, because it's pretty incredible when you compare to other Parks and Rec departments that don't have, you know, common misconception is, we're a park district, and we're not. They have a small little sliver of our tax levy and everything else that you see, the million-plus dollars that they derive on just user fees alone is pretty incredible. So I just wanted to make note of that. Also, it makes budgeting a lot easier, I think, for them and us moving forward, too.
Yes, thank you, Director Malkyody.
Well, Dotton.
Any other further questions or comments on, uh, capital improvement plan?
Looking forward to more budgeting discussions.
Cross, uh, or, sorry, board and trustee reports. Uh, cross, C four report. It's getting late.
Our report. Uh, you heard quite a bit of it this evening. The rest is in your packet, and, uh, you can always contact me if you have any questions, so, um, we're moving along.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other trustee reports this evening?
I'll just make a very quick reminder that, uh, Person of the Year Dinner is September twenty-fifth, honoring Janice Foley. Tickets are available at the library, Riverside Bank, and Aunt Anna's. Um, cocktail attire would be appropriate. Her favorite color is purple, so please wear that if you have it in the wardrobe. Um, tickets will be available until the seventeenth. They will not be sold thereafter or at the door. Um, cocktail hour starts at six and dinner is at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Any other trustee reports? We do have need for an executive session this evening. Uh, the board will not reconvene and no final action will take place. I would ask for a motion and second to adjourn to executive session.
Motion made.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 And the opposed, none.